All right, good evening, everybody. It is 7:00 on Monday, May 19th. I'm going to call this State and City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all members of the council are here with the exception of Mr. Bauer. For the record, are there any announcements or additions to the agenda? Julia?
No.
Okay. I do have one item I want to add for council discussion, and that is a request. And we can add this wherever. Request to have a member from the council either serve in my place and/or assist with the Detroit drawdown issue. So why doesn't the council consider that? And we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting. Is there any declaration of ex-party contacts, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? I don't hear any. That leaves us to item number four, which is the consent agenda. And that would be the consent, it'd be the council, City Council work session minutes of May 5th, City Council regular session minutes of May 5th, and Resolution Number 25-015, awarding a contract for the construction of the 2025 Crack Seal Project to Salem Seating Coating Company.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Patty.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda with change of excuse to absent unless otherwise stated going forward for council members.
Okay. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is motion in the second to accept the consent agenda as amended. And Counselor Patty read that amendment. Do we need to read it back again? Okay. Any further discussion, council? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries four to zero. That leaves us with presentations, and it looks like we have a presentation from the Liberty House and the Police Department. So we've got Chief coming up, or we've got these fine folks coming up. Good afternoon. Putting the green button? Yeah, there you go.
That always throws me. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come appear before you today. For the record, I'm Brucey Anderson. I'm Deputy CEO of Liberty House, and joining me is our Assistant Deputy CEO and MDT Coordinator, Cameron Woolford. Thank you so much for allowing us time on your agenda. It's really an honor to be with you all here tonight. We at Liberty House really appreciate the city of Staton and the Staton Police Department for being great partners with Liberty House on our multidisciplinary team, MDT. Liberty House is the children's advocacy center serving Marion and Polk Counties as the CAC for this region. We provide specialized pediatric and therapy services for children referred for concerns of physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, witness to domestic violence, trafficking, and other types of trauma. Liberty House opened in 1999, and we've served over 15,000 children in our 26 years. Liberty House is one of 24 CACs here in Oregon and 960 across the U.S. In 2024, we served over 1,000 children between our clinic and therapy programs and provided prevention and education for another 1,500 grownups. All of us at Liberty House are committed to helping children and families facing these types of abuse concerns get the best help possible. Children who need our services have been through very difficult experiences, which is why there are rigorous standards of accreditation to meet. Our collective hard work came to fruition last year as we attained accreditation through the National Children's Alliance. So your agency played an important role in that happening, and because of the high quality of work you do and your role on the Marion County MDT, we know that we are among the top 5% of CACs and MDTs in the country. So I'll turn this over to Cameron.
Thank you. We are here to recognize and honor the Staton Police Department because of its sophistication, hard work, choices, and collaboration in responding to concerns of child abuse and concern, because of child abuse and neglect, they made it possible for us to be accredited. In 2023, 2024, Liberty House received 53 referrals for our clinic services regarding children from Staton, thanks to your commitment to keeping children safe and holding offenders accountable. And we know that there is hope for these children. We also know that it is never too late to help and to heal. So we are here to recognize Staton Police Department for their efforts in getting us all accredited as the MDT and the CAC for Marion and Polk Counties. Thank you so much to Chief Johns and to her sergeants and to her officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great award. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to do a quick picture, if that's okay?
Yep. Go ahead.
And obviously, if you have any questions, I'm sure they would take questions, too.
Oh, yes.
There we go. We didn't do anything. We're okay. I'm okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, you guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Carey.
I would like to say one thing about the Liberty House. I was the transportation manager for the school district here, and every interaction I ever had with Liberty House was very top-notch, very professional. They helped us, we helped them with the transportation of children. We were taking them down to Liberty House. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks, good.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, this is an opportunity for public comment, and I didn't receive any green letters. So anybody want to speak? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Move on to general business and then the discussion of council vision statement and values statement. Julia?
Thank you. In your packet is just a reminder of our goal-setting session and then the consultant. Through that discussion, we did have a conversation about visioning and whether or not we wanted to make a goal of having a formal citywide vision statement. It was decided that that wasn't necessary, but there is some value still in having a council-based vision statement. And so the consultant, Ashley with SSW, provided a proposed or draft vision statement and values. And if you recall, when you adopted the goals through the goal-setting, I mentioned that we were going to come back and discuss the vision and values. So that's what we're doing this evening. We do not have to hash it out. If there's a lot of discussion, we could certainly have further discussion, but I wanted to just sort of start the conversation. Just as a reminder, a vision statement is really a who are we, where are we going, what's our future, sort of a classic visioning exercise, this picture you went away for 20 years and came back. What do you see? Who is the community? What is the organization? What have you? The values is how do, what do we stand for? Who are we? So vision is where are we going? Who are we? Values is what do we stand for? And then the goals themselves are how do we get there? So that's kind of the way that progresses. So with that, I really just want to have a conversation. The vision statement that was proposed was Staton is a vibrant, connected community where people come first, growth is intentional, and every resident has the opportunity to thrive. The values were intentionality. We act with purpose, ensuring that our decisions and actions align with the best interests of our community, fostering trust and meaningful impact. Collaboration, we work together across teams and with our community, recognizing that collective effort leads to stronger solutions and a more connected Staton. Stewardship, we are responsible stewards of public resources, time, and trust, ensuring sustainability and accountability in everything we do. Engagement, we listen with intention, value diverse perspectives, and create space for residents to be heard, shaping a future that reflects their needs and aspirations. And progress, we move forward with integrity and innovation, always seeking solutions that strengthen our community and organization for generations to come. So really, I'd like to hear, is there anything that doesn't resonate with you or that is missing that we would want to do some modifications on either tonight or at a future meeting?
I guess, Julia, I would ask, go ahead.
I just want to add something to the intentionality, if we could possibly, is the word transparency. I think that's important for our community to know that we are a very transparent council as well.
I was just going to offer that. Maybe we should sit with this a little bit and come back to it. But that's up to council.
Yeah, I would definitely like a little time to maybe look this over and think about wordsmithing it. And, but yeah, I'd like a little time to kind of digest it.
Does council feel that digesting it and discussing it in a regular business meeting is appropriate or having a work session? Just getting me comments. I know you love work sessions so much. You know, perhaps, yeah, getting me your thoughts and comments, and we can come back and have a discussion.
I think maybe you collect thoughts and comments to start with, and if you need to expand upon that with a work session.
Okay.
So can council get this back to Julia by, when's the next council meeting?
June 2nd. And there's no rush. I mean, this isn't a timeline, but I would love to.
How about June 15th? Does that work? Cool. Cool. June 15th, Julia.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to third quarter financial update. Mr. Brand?
Good evening. For the record, James Brand, City Finance Director. And it's time for the third quarter financial update. And just as a terminology, as we move to a two-year budget, biennium and biennial, you're getting used to, now I'm going to share with you what quarter means. We're going to have eight quarters, okay? So you can give me jokes about that whenever you want, but in the future budget, there'll be eight quarters, and we'll have these updates every three months. So it's the format we've been used to, and I realize that, I'll email this to the rest of the Budget Committee so you have it, but just did want to go through some highlights that are in the staff report. This analysis is sharing some of the same philosophies that we've been talking about. We're budgeting for possibilities, but we're realizing realities. So there's, of course, some projects that we've budgeted that are grant projects that haven't gotten kicked off yet, some that are underway, and some that are still planned for the future. But most of those have been budgeted completely for this year. So that's why there's some underspending and undercollecting. So some of the revenue comments, we've gotten very little of the grant income, which is why the revenues are partially undercollected in some areas. In terms of expenditures, we're nine months into the year, and the city has spent 55% of its budgeted expenses. The community center, however, is a little overspent at this time, and that's because the kitchen remodel that has already taken place. The pool is overspent a bit because of some one-time repairs that we've done, and also for, because of an acknowledgement that the budget was too low for the personnel costs. So just today, we're doing a budget entry to move some of the contingency, actually all of the contingency, into the operating budget to allow that fund to continue through the rest of the year. The street fund is a bit underspent at this point, but as you saw in the consent agenda, the slurry seals are getting underway, and the West Town improvements will be taking place later this year as well. The water fund is underspent, and that's because of the ASR project that hasn't started yet. I did want to make a correction in the notes there. It's not $1.25 for the ASR project. There should be an M there for a million. And I've provided the cash balances there for the third quarter. It's pretty close to the split between the first quarter and second quarter balances. So that's our cash situation. Those were the highlights I wanted to cover. I did include a new chart, that last pie chart on the fourth page of the report. It's just the city expenditures by category, showing personnel at 37% of our expenses, capital outlay 31%, services and supplies 26%, and debt service 6%. So another chart for you. Be happy to take any questions you have.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sims.
So the community center was overspent on the kitchen remodel. How much was it overspent by?
It's not that it overspent the project, it's just that when you look at the whole budget being 100% of the year, we've spent 79% of it through 75% of the budget. So it shows it a little overspent in terms of the percentage at that point in the year. And that's because of that large one-time project that was completed already.
Okay. And then the pool fund, we're quite a bit over on that, too.
Yeah, so we're 80% there, 75% of the way through, and that's, like I said, it's, the personnel costs were underbudgeted. The way that the budget was done wasn't as accurate as it should have been. That was corrected in the biennial budget we just passed. But yeah, so we'll be moving contingency into the personnel services lines to shore that up.
Do we know how much we're moving yet?
The contingency is 23,000, and we're going to move all of that into the operating budget.
23K.
Is that going to cover the difference till the end of the year?
We think it will. We're watching it very closely. We think it will.
We are looking, I know there's been some discussion about even cutting back some hours because we want to make sure that it does. We haven't, I think, finalized that yet. It won't be like full-on closures, but it will probably be a few hours. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we're watching this very closely, and we will do what we need to do to make sure that it doesn't go over budget.
Yeah, we did, we are going to close just some not-well-attended Monday swim sessions of some sort. I'm not exactly sure, but that we will be not doing those in the month of June.
Okay, and that's only operational?
It's to save lifeguard costs.
No, I mean, the transfers that cover operational? So what I'm getting at is if we can't have something happen in the next month, right? Because we wouldn't have any way to cover it.
Something that's not covered by insurance.
That's what I'm getting at.
Because if it's covered by insurance, we would be covered. But yeah, unexpected costs would not be good for the pool in the next six weeks.
Okay. Counsel, anybody else? Any more questions? No questions for James? Thank you, James. Oh, where am I? All right, now this is where I'm getting my papers shuffled up. There we go. All right. Communication from city staff. Julia?
Yeah, we're just cruising along. I have a few, I didn't connect with Chief. Do you have any updates? Okay. Just a reminder, just some update, some upcoming meetings. Parks Board is June 3rd. Library Board meets on the 21st. Arts Commission meets on the 22nd, and Planning Commission will meet on the 27th. On June 7th, we'll have one more announcement for this, but I wanted to make sure everybody knows and remembers, Republic Services Spring Bulky Waste Day is June 7th. It's a Saturday in the parking lot again. And I just, I wanted to bring Barry up to give you an update on the infamous Third and Ida puddle, because we've had some rain, and we have some information. So he's going to share it with you.
For the record, Barry Buchanan, Public Works Director. We have, as Julia said, rain over the last couple of days, and we still have a puddle. That is not all bad news. It is, in actual fact, a construction issue. The constructor has taken on board that they, in actual fact, have a small dam right at the crossing on the road, and over the next 14 days, they will come in and grind that small dam out. And the puddle that was foreseen, well, seen this morning, up to about 3/4 inch deep, will presumably go away. So the grading, as it stands right now, is that there is a high spot in the laying of the, laying of the asphalt, the renewed asphalt. They will come in and grind it out. Got one other thing, if I'm allowed. Even, well, good news, and I'm probably speaking a little bit early, but PNWA has issued awards to our wastewater treatment plant. Our wastewater treatment plant, in actual fact, succeeded in becoming the best wastewater treatment plant in the region. And in addition to that, we have two operators who were awarded Best Operators for the year. Traditionally, the association does not award both the plant and the operators a best award in any given year. But we have two operators, Dennis and Dale, who have been awarded the Best Operators, and the plant itself has been issued Best Plant in the region.
Fantastic. Great news.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Or.
Barry, hold on. What do you have to do to get awarded Best Plant in the region?
You write a story about what you're doing.
Okay, okay.
And in actual, in reality, it's probably who writes the best story, to be quite honest. But it is a write-up of what the plant's actually doing, what it's achieving, how well it's discharging, what its discharge records are, what sort of flow it's handling, how many operators it's actually got in service and operating at any given time, what services the plant actually provides. Our plant is actually one of the few that has a certified lamp in it as well. So that helps in this evaluation. We have had no notifications of discharge outside the reporting requirements. So we're doing really well. Basically, it means that Danielle put a write-up about the plant and then submitted it as a request for consideration. And then there is a panel, the National Fact reviews all the submittals, and they come up with a recommendation on who wins. And we managed to clean up this year.
And I'll also add, in addition to that, I know that Danielle has commented to me that DEQ has come out and done inspections and commented in shock at how wonderful, you know, it's, you guys have been there. It's a very clean, well-managed facility, so.
And I'll reinforce that, that in reality, the guys do a great, well, guys and ladies, do a great job at, in actual fact, in presentation in that plant. So the lawns are mowed, they just bought a lift so that they can high-pressure clean every, all the walls and et cetera. You know, it's appearance as well as production, and they do a really good job on this. So I commend everything that they've done, and thank you for your support.
Don't leave yet. Barry, don't leave yet.
I'm trying.
Can, as I mentioned earlier before the meeting, can you just give an idea of what the representation you're looking for for the Detroit drawdown?
Oh, yes. As it stands right now, there is an ESA out by the Corps that is a supplemental ESI, so evaluation and consideration of how and what they're going to do with the drawdown itself. So currently, as of the 16th, I think it was, yeah, it was the 16th, they submitted the documentation. There will be meetings. I don't have the dates personally at hand, but there are two meetings coming up, this and next week, next week in actual fact, which we would have to attend. And then there is reviewing and commentary as far as the documentation is concerned itself. And we would really like to have, you know, council support on that group. We're suggesting that the mayor, if he's willing to do that, and a counselor be involved. Julia, Danielle, and Mike Bradley would be on the committee, including myself, as representation from the city.
And Barry, these are the meetings that we received the email about, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So the virtual meetings, and I assume you want us to all go at the same, to the same meeting, or?
I am suggesting that we, in actual fact, have a collective before the meeting.
Okay.
And have basically a single voice representation in the meeting, so that we're not all trying to talk over top of each other. But as a collective, we do actually appear so that we have that numbers game to, in actual fact, support or support our ideas and approach and requirements.
So the first meeting is a virtual meeting on May 28th from 7, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and there's one on May 29th from noon to 1:00. Those are both virtual. And then there's an in-person meeting on May 31st in Detroit and June 3rd in Salem. So by, I think, the 28th, that's kind of, I think, when, before that, we would want to have a meeting.
We would collectively want to have a meeting, yes.
Is the 31st a Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Barry. You can commit me to be on that. You know, I just need to have someone else join me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Julia, sorry.
No, that's fine. That is all I have to share with you this evening.
Okay. This is an opportunity for communication from council and myself, and I'll let council go first, as I always do.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Counselor Patty.
Yeah, just in the council liaison role, I wanted to give a brief update, just for everybody's awareness and knowledge, so they could share with the community. It sounds like Thursday, the school board's going to have kind of a packed agenda. They're going to be doing their meeting at the high school, I believe in the library. And so at this meeting, they're going to be doing some acknowledgements of the valedictorians and soliditorians, the ending of the school year here. And I just encourage anybody who can make it to support these kiddos. That'd be great. In addition, they're also looking at a curriculum approval, too. So if that's something that is important to you to be at and voice on, that's something I encourage everybody to be at. And then just also as an update, because we had already talked about this at a council level, as far as the economic planning, I'm trying to engage the chamber with that. I wanted to go ahead and just say that, still working with Carmel to meet today, we were not able to, unfortunately. She had a transportation issue. So hoping to meet and engage and see what we can do there. And I will be able to update you the next time we've met.
Thank you. Good feedback. Counselor Sims?
For the Detroit Dam Drawdown Committee, so 28th, 29th, we'd meet on all four of those days?
No, no. They're having meetings on those days to have public discussions and meetings. So we would meet on one of those days, and we'll need to meet before whatever day we decide that we're going to go. Does that make sense? They've got meetings on the 28th, 29th, 31st, and 3rd. I assume it's all basically the same information that they're sharing. We'll go to one of those.
They're virtual.
There's two that are virtual, two that are in person. And so we'll decide which ones, which one we want to aim for, but we want to meet prior to that.
So how many councils are we talking? Just this one?
Probably just two.
Two?
Yes. The mayor and one, yeah. So one counselor plus the mayor.
Oh, I can do it. I can jump on there.
Counselor Sims, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Carey.
Very simple question. I've been on the council just a very short time, been to a lot of meetings in that short time. I'd like to propose that we possibly move or consider moving our council meetings to 6:00 p.m. rather than 7:00 p.m. 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM. I just want to leave that up for the council.
Yeah, I know that discussion's come up in the past. I think I asked that same question before. It's council's desire, and convey that to the city manager, and we can have a discussion about it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ort.
I, I'd be in favor of like, maybe 6:30, but I don't, like, 6 o'clock might be a little early for getting off of work and dinner and kids and stuff, so 6:30 might be a good compromise for me, if that works for everybody else.
Counselor Patty.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, have we heard from members of the public or any kind of, I don't know, quest for this modification, or is this just, we're discussing this at our level to decide our preferences?
I'll give you a personal experience. Yes, I heard it from the CEO of one of the largest employers in the city, asking us, "How come we don't have it at that hour? Where would it be easier for folks of that nature to attend?" So, this is my only anecdote to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ort.
What was their, like, what was their thought on that?
I think it would give them the opportunity to attend council meetings more often than, from the time they get off of work than having to wait that other time. They can come to the council meetings a little bit. That was the...
Like, they could come straight from work as opposed to like waiting around?
Participate a little bit, yes, right, correct. That was, I think that was the premise.
Okay.
Counselor Sims?
I'm pretty flexible. I can...
You don't count.
I'm probably the most flexible one here, so I would happily do whatever.
And I think, I know, I don't want to speak on behalf of Julia, but I know she's gonna say, "Well, what about the work sessions?" And I don't really care. To be honest with you, we've had too many. I mean, Julia, I mean, Julia knows how I feel about the work sessions.
Yeah, I think we can have more of those conversations in the council meeting, but that just means the council meetings potentially go longer. I also would want to look at our council rules and make sure that that is consistent with that, or that you propose a change there, and make sure there's nothing in the charter, which I don't think that there is. But we can certainly look at that and maybe have a report back or a recommendation, thought analysis for the next meeting.
Sure. Counselor Sims?
The only other thing I was gonna mention, what about the elephant in the room? We've had a counselor missing for a long time. I mean, what are the options with that?
I think it's spelled out in several places, and I think Julia can confirm for us. I think it's in the rules and/or the charter, one of the two, or maybe both, I don't know. I think there's a 60-day window or something. I have communicated a little bit with Counselor Bauer, and I don't know the outcome. I'll leave it at that. So, council have any thoughts, or shall we, is this...
I think, I mean, you said it correctly. We looked at the charter, and there's a 60-day requirement. There's nothing about excused or unexcused or anything like that, so.
Excuse me? I think it's probably, I think we're probably there.
So, and I don't know technically, and we can certainly look into this, I don't know if it's council meetings or all meetings that council is generally at.
Yeah, I don't think it specifies.
Yeah.
I think it's meetings just in general. I guess I would just say it presents a challenge for all the folks that are here that have participated to have all these hours committed and all this time and effort, and then not have that additional representation, so. Hopefully, we'll have resolution by that, by the next council meeting. That's all I can say. I don't know how else to articulate that.
Do you want to try reaching out to them again?
I will. Yep, I will. Anybody else, have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ort.
I just want to say thank you to the city staff for our Budget Committee meetings last week, and to the Budget Committee members, some of you are here tonight. It's a long process, and I know that I ask a lot of questions, so I don't always make it easy. So, thank you for bearing with us, and yes, thank you.
And that leaves me, and I think the only thing I would mention is that I think tomorrow's the deadline for the voting, correct? The 20th? So, if you haven't dropped off your ballots for our levy or voted period, why don't you consider doing that? And outside of that, I don't think I have anything pressing. So, with that, we'll conclude the meeting at 7:35.